Paulson. This is too much of that building. Okay, call the meeting to order.
Karen.
Yeah.
Carl.
Here.
Charlie.
Yeah.
Joe.
Here at the meeting.
Here.
Okay, we're gonna call it vouchers.
And I don't have a second.
I got a situation, forget my initials, anyway. But people don't. Forward. He's a rioter, straight. It was through there, I'm like, I don't find him too.
Karen, where was that? Uh.
Lake George.
Lake George.
The reputation.
Oh, I didn't, uh, I forgot to say, oh, that, when I should go, like, you're like. Don't sign them down, because. I'll put the language on.
Back in the day, the guy, yeah, yeah, actually, guy, when they lose their.
Yeah, there's not enough space to put everything on it. Oh, wait. And like. And all like. He'd vanish from everywhere.
I already said.
I don't, I was just thinking. Well, I'm, I was here, I was, I was, I was getting the, she says, I don't know, it's a lot of things. So I turned the, I mean, whether it's, well, because I was, one of those. So I didn't see my lot of those.
They want that tree was out here.
And then calling Ashley's every time, wasn't that, I think, camera, or, 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 um, um, um. Yes, okay, yeah, I didn't, and I teach him this, oh, yeah. And I know he was, he, he, oh, I have, I have, yes, this, I have, I have, I have, I have, I have. Yeah, that's it. That's a, um, right.
They have various submissions planned. Okay.
The, 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 so, we're hanging marshmallow rose.
I associate, so, uh, it's, I wanted, no, yeah.
Also, I'm gonna be sure, so, I'll, I'll, I want. But it, I can trust. Yeah, it'll, uh, well, if you don't want to lose them, yeah, I'll do it. So he, 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 uh, one, 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 one. Yeah, straight.
You're gonna think of the cheapest cheapest. Everybody clutching.
The teacher's good. Very kind, you know, that, you're kind of doing.
I drove, that's, that's, that was a nice, it takes, yeah.
Yeah, I know.
No. Yeah.
My, and I think.
Actually, you know, that might be the way to go, because I was, um, Amtrak is stopping six, three lines. A day to off, um, um, off state, so, yeah. From there. They're shut, they're redoing, or something, one track, he's, uh, North, North Mexico. Not great, essentially, yeah. Yeah. And the state.
And, yeah, that is definitely.
And it's only a ten minute walk. That's the one.
Yeah, see, though, that's a good thing. For sure. And what you even found.
Nice train ride down to Hudson.
Yes, but it is looking happy, one is, yeah. And probably doesn't really. But I think that's.
If, if, if you're trying to do. That's why we'll see that sort of.
You know, because our people wants everything split up, maybe has their own, well, where's their. This is all the same, well, the same, or, or, stairs. My invoice just split out. Yes, but it's anything, I, like, everything, it's something that's last, that's, uh, two, three, nine, nine, two, three. And it's, I think, most of it's, uh, which makes it easier. Four, or, or, you can, but. Just, and then, that, because your money is not, right, it's, right. We had serious, uh, so it was, he was, he was, he was named, but, yeah, it was a time, yeah, this part, and so she felt good. Whenever, and we kept, yeah. And then, like, I'll take that, I don't think that is a, like. Yeah.
Um.
Well, when you can use some, let's see, they, that two chests, are that what they're saying?
No, no, no. She's looking at the water. Yeah, it should be once a week.
Like, as a set of intentions.
No, I think it's, the week is, is. But there's something about that, but, look into that. I thought it's, it's, it's recommended to do it every day, or they don't have to do it once a week by, also, yeah, but, yeah.
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 My.
It's worth it.
We got points.
Yeah.
Absolutely.
Yeah.
You want.
See that.
Take a hundred minutes back.
Well, we never.
I saw.
You know, just very.
I mean.
I think this is.
Come.
I don't.
Just something.
The options.
For.
Please.
In.
You.
Hmm.
Of course.
I'm really.
Sure.
I know.
I believe.
Then.
That was.
You.
You're like.
They do.
This.
So.
Yeah.
Why?
You.
Really.
Really.
Turn on.
That.
And that.
Yeah, cuz it's every three days and then all of a sudden you're two weeks with nothing. That's the only occasion that there's nobody ever.
Wow.
Well.
I know this one.
You should do this.
And.
It's.
Um.
I'll make it that thousand.
Those.
Two.
I mean.
I'm afraid.
People.
Through.
Watch.
More.
Yeah.
That's why I think.
I want to.
But.
Yes.
Thank you.
I always.
The.
Very.
You should.
So.
You.
You have.
Really.
Your.
Yep.
And.
She's gonna take care of.
Because of just bad as they acknowledge.
The.
This.
I'm.
Yeah.
So.
Oh.
The.
And you know.
Rush.
Oh. Both.
Would you say?
I don't get it. Yeah.
It's.
You can't.
So.
Change.
Those.
Okay.
Thanks for.
I'm.
That.
You.
And so. So I got a little. There.
When I.
Said.
I saw.
The reason.
This is.
One of the.
Sure. Very clear.
I'm.
We had.
Um.
I'm.
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 Okay.
Second.
Cause I'm.
Those.
Everybody.
Look.
Which is.
I'm.
Really.
So.
You know.
We were.
Second.
Yeah.
Yeah.
Just.
I need to.
Kind of.
Very.
So.
This is.
This is my.
I need.
We.
Yeah, did you want her to?
She's got.
All right.
County. County roads.
So.
I.
Oh.
It wasn't a frustrating amount.
No.
So. Helped.
Yeah.
Someone.
You made. Figure. See. Sorry.
Okay.
You know.
We can get.
A hundred.
Sure.
Yeah.
Why?
How many?
Yeah.
Oh.
Oh.
That's.
That's.
We have.
They have.
That's.
Sure.
What?
Why?
I think I saw.
I'm.
It's.
In.
Your.
I think.
Certainly.
They also.
Was.
I was.
My.
They.
Your.
She said.
Really.
Times.
I'm.
My.
You.
Somebody's.
Ben.
So.
That's.
Is that?
I'm.
Is.
Yeah.
You.
They.
Is it?
Sometimes.
That means.
It's.
Oh.
I'm.
Um.
But. It's. Not. First. Oh. So. Okay.
It's.
Time.
There.
So did you?
Uh.
I used.
Read that. Office. For the women.
Say.
So.
I guess. My. It's. Will get much. longer. Than. Stay. Position. Means.
Something would be done.
Yeah.
Or.
And yeah, just.
Same.
So.
Tell.
And.
I'm.
Sorry.
Oh, yeah.
And.
Started. Starting. Well.
That's.
So.
Yeah.
Right.
Yeah.
So. Like.
It's.
Just.
I only know.
Why?
Oh, I guess.
It's.
I mean, I didn't.
Cause.
I said.
Remember.
I mean.
Well.
It's.
So.
You know.
What?
I was. Very. It's.
Anyone.
I mean. The. Real. I'm. So. Wasn't. Success.
So.
Yeah.
I'm.
Sick.
That was.
Like.
I'm.
Sorry.
Yeah.
Yeah. I was like, wow, this is small. Yeah. I made that connection after. You know?
You would.
It's.
This is.
I was.
Yeah.
She. Yeah.
I remember.
I was.
On.
You want.
From.
Then.
Your.
Well.
So.
Do you?
It's.
It turns out. We.
It was.
He's.
Me.
I.
Um.
Well, me.
And.
Really.
Down.
I was.
A shit.
These. Trying to. Please.
Yeah.
John. John. If you. Like.
Yeah.
So.
What?
Right.
Um.
They're.
Right now.
Or at least.
Can.
For.
This.
Now.
They want.
So.
They would.
It's.
Thank you.
Right.
And.
I don't.
I'm.
Something.
Me.
I don't.
Wish.
I'm.
Probably.
No.
I also.
You know.
Product.
Yeah.
No.
It's.
Amazing.
Nothing.
That.
Um.
So.
I don't.
It's.
Inside.
Okay.
And.
She's.
Good.
Yeah.
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 She's.
In.
Yeah.
And.
By the. Sneeze.
I'm.
Taking.
The.
Fish.
Well, you're gonna be. A.
So.
Yes.
I gotta. Leave.
So.
I'm.
Very.
Even.
She asked.
Yeah.
Next.
Told her.
Um.
She asked.
And she said.
That.
On.
Maybe.
On.
If.
She.
Shut.
Down.
Maybe.
As.
We've.
Any.
She.
Really?
Think.
That.
Was it?
That.
I'm.
I'm.
Curious.
They.
They.
Especially.
For.
And.
So.
And.
So I don't think.
So.
It's.
Same.
I just.
I mean.
So.
We.
Don't.
And.
That.
Which is.
Very.
Interesting.
But.
Oh. Just.
Have.
Yeah.
I was.
Driving.
And.
Anyway.
But.
He's.
For.
Okay. Yeah.
And that.
rapidly.
Come.
Since.
Jondo will see.
And.
Right.
Different.
Five.
Different.
Really.
Train.
Did I? You guys?
It's like.
The.
Okay.
Or.
I didn't.
Know.
Should I tell him or no?
He was.
Five.
She was.
A lot.
We kind of.
I'm.
Wait.
For.
Oh, sure.
Yeah.
He's.
Really.
After.
True.
Hope.
As.
I see.
Anybody.
I got.
I think.
Realize.
It was.
Maybe.
More.
Yeah.
So.
I'd be looking.
I would.
To.
My.
So.
And.
The. First.
That.
It.
Concern.
They.
Probably.
It sounds.
About.
My.
Or.
We.
So.
I'm.
I'm.
A lot.
Of time.
People.
Please.
Where.
Supposed.
To.
They.
Have.
Time.
I.
Yes.
I remember that.
Yeah.
Yeah.
So.
So.
Exactly.
Now.
Here.
I'm.
Said.
Yeah.
Oh, yeah.
Doing.
Seeing.
Checks.
Probably.
They're.
All.
The.
Right.
And that.
So.
That was.
The.
Yeah.
Actually.
Yes.
Thanks.
At the time.
And that's.
My.
My.
I'm.
Now.
So.
It was.
I got. Some. Really. I think. A couple. Okay. Uh. We're done with vouchers, so now it's time for the town clerk present the two hundred and twenty-five preliminary budget to the town. Okay. The legal notices were in the paper. There's three separate legal notices that were combined. Uh. For this agenda. Notice of public hearing on the ambulance contract. Notice is hereby given that a regular meeting slash public hearing will be held by the Sterling Town Board at the Sterling Town Hall on October twenty-first, twenty-twenty-four at seven oh five P M. For the purpose of consideration, the contract with the village of Fairhaven for ambulance service to be furnished by the village of Fairhaven to the fire protection district established in the town upon the following terms. A, the village of Fairhaven shall answer and attend upon all calls in the fire protection district. B, for such service, the village of Fairhaven shall receive and the town of Sterling shall pay the sum of thirty-three thousand, six hundred and thirty-five dollars and fifty-two cents. For District One, the sum of twenty-one thousand, seven hundred and sixty-nine dollars and eighty-six cents to District Two. And the sum of eight thousand, six hundred and fifty-four dollars and seventies cents for District Three for twenty-twenty-five upon renewal by agreement of the town and the village of Fairhaven.
I double checked. I didn't.
Okay.
Third.
I was trying to combine.
Each sum paid within ninety days following the first day of the contract for renewal. C, the contract shall continue until December thirty-first, twenty-twenty-five. All persons interested in this matter shall be heard at such time and place by order of the town board, county crime shield, Sterling Town Deputy Clerk. You notice is hereby given that the preliminary budget of the town of Sterling for the fiscal year beginning January first, twenty-twenty-five has been completed and filed in the office of the town clerk. Twelve ninety State Route one oh four A Sterling, New York, one three one five six, where it is available for inspection by any interested persons at all reasonable hours. Further notice is hereby given that the town board, but that the town board of the town of Sterling. Will meet and review said preliminary budget and hold public hearing and a special meeting thereon at the Sterling Town Hall, twelve ninety State Route one oh four A Sterling, New York, one three one five six, on the twenty-first day of October, twenty-twenty-three. At seven ten P M. And at such hearing, any person may be heard in favor of or against any item or items therein contained. Pursuant to section one oh eight of the town law, the proposed salaries of the following town officers are hereby specified as follows. Supervisor, fourteen thousand, eight hundred and ninety-two. Councilpersons total of four, eleven thousand, nine hundred and ninety-three. Town Justice Number One, fifteen thousand, five hundred and eighty-six. Town Justice Number Two, fifteen thousand, five hundred and eighty-six. Town Clerk and Collector, forty-three thousand, four hundred and sixty-one. Highway Superintendent, sixty-two thousand, four hundred. By order of this, but by order of the Sterling Town Board, Town Crown Shield, Town Deputy Clerk. Resolution to open public hearing on ambulance contracts.
I'll make that resolution.
I'll second that.
Karen?
Yeah.
Carl?
Yes.
Charlie?
Yeah.
Joan?
Yes.
Yes. Resolution to open the public hearing on twenty-twenty-five preliminary budget. I'll make that motion. I'll second that.
Karen?
Yes.
Carl?
Yes.
Charlie?
Yes.
Joan?
Yes.
Yes. Okay. Privilege of the floor. Lee?
We show ourselves. School. At. Own. Uh. Paid. On. One.
We will get to that in the department reports.
Great.
Yes, ma'am.
That was short. Slap. One oh four A Sterling. Um. Councilpersons total of four, eleven thousand, nine hundred and ninety-three dollars each, or they just decided that number by.
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 Thank you.
Yeah.
Anyone else? Okay. Moving on to department reports. You. All right. So. Do. First up. And I am.
Okay. I'll just mention a couple of things. I'm in the process of doing several interviews with Harold Barton to get his history and his memories of the town of Sterling. He's ninety years old, so I would need to. Listen. I want to listen to him and get down his memories about doing some more work for Nan Wright Powers and Cheney Powers and the Stafford family. Uh. The mural that I talked briefly about last night, I'd like to give a little more information about that. Uh. The. Village. Well, more than that is in the process of. Of. Planning a mural probably for the east side of the Hardware Cafe. It's the largest place and is available. For viewing as people drive by the village. Uh. There are a couple of places on Lake Street, but we think that because there's a public parking lot in the village, it's probably the best. And I think we'll have permission from the London's. Anyway, one of the things we're doing is selling art posters as a fundraiser. There's a. An example of one that Joan donated, uh, right out here in the hall, and I I have some more of them. This art poster was created by, uh, David Dow for his brother's birthday. He made the original into a puzzle and it took us. Uh. Brother a long time to get it put together, but he finally figured it out. So if anyone is interested in the poster, I'd have a few here in the town hall. Uh. Next thing. Uh. The village has contacted me about, uh, working with the town to put up some military banners. In our township and the village. So I think we have talked about this at a couple of staff meetings, so we're not abandoning abandoning it. We're. Planning to go ahead with this project. Uh. Next. Um. The signs, the. Historic signs that are in the town. There are four of them and they were in pretty rough shape. Um. So it's a unfunded mandate that if nobody else does it, then the town is responsible for taking care of them. And luckily with the cooperation of our highway department and the cooperation of many other people, the prices are. Very inexpensive. I think the only thing that was paid.
For.
Was the paint. It's regulation paint that had to be purchased and Kurt did that through the town. The sandblasting was done and its value was one thousand dollars. The, uh. Uh. Cast iron signs are all cast iron. They were sandblasted and primed and then Lance Powell, resident of the town, painted all four of them. Um. As a gift to us.
Thanks.
Hmm. That's probably the value of all that is probably at least two thousand dollars for all the work that was done. I would like to. Take up some sort of collection for Lance Powell for doing the painting.
Good.
Uh. Luckily. The. Workers, town highway department picked up the signs. Uh.